I called to order the March 1st, 2018 business meeting and asked a county administrator, please take the roll.
Good morning, Commissioners. We have Mr. Stephen Mackcorr, County Council, here this morning, and then Kevin Moss, serving as your clerk of the board this morning. I'll start with a roll with Commissioner Humberson.
Here.
Commissioner Fisher.
Here.
Commissioner Schrader.
Here.
Commissioner Savis.
Here.
Chair Bernard.
Please join me in Pledge of Allegiance. The pledge of allegiance is supplied by the United States of America and to their republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. As always, we'll start out with citizen communication. We have Kathy Gordon in Faith Leath. Welcome.
Let you go first. Youth before age.
Please tell us, introduce yourself and where you live.
Sure. So, good morning, Commissioners. My name is Kathy Gordon. I live in Lake Oswego, Oregon. I've been a resident here in Oregon for the past 10 years. And the reason I'm here, actually, is I started my career in 1969, and there were no women in the particular job that I was in. There were no women in management at all. I worked for a Japanese steamship line. And throughout my career, what I really noticed is what a difficult time it was for women in our particular industry to get any kind, to get ahead, period. And so, I started out as the Secretary to the Vice President of this steamship line, and I ended up as the West Coast Vice President for the steamship line. And through my career, I made it a point to really try to work with women, to be an advocate for women, to train women, to support women, and to try to promote women if they were the best candidate. And so, the real reason that I'm here is, as I retired, I want to let you know that the majority of the managers in the company that I represented on the West Coast were women. And I'm here today to show my support for the Commissioners, because with the Me Too movement that is going on, it's so very, very important that everyone take a stand on harassment, on supporting women in all aspects of their lives. And so, in, with this Me Too movement, over the past several months, we are fortunate here in Clackamas County to really have what is known as the Safe Place on our campus. And the Safe Place is really a family justice center, and it offers a collaborative system for any woman who has needed to speak or a place to stay because of sexual violence or just violence in general. And so, you know, it's easy for a woman to go there and to report the crime, to get counseling, to get a restraining order, to get help, to get a shelter, and so, and help with transportation. And the reason I'm bringing this up, as I understand, there have been accusations made against Jim Bernard for not being an advocate for women, and I really disagree with this. I have worked with Jim on many issues, and I want to let everyone here know that Jim personally donated $5,000 out of his own pocket to get this shelter up and running. And to me, that is advocacy at its best. This is putting your money where your mouth is and really showing the respect for women. So, I want to thank you, and I want to thank all of you for the fact that you all get along, you all work hard for your constituents, and I applaud you. Thank you.
Thank you.
You did it. Wow. My name is Faith Leath, and I live here in Oregon City, and I've lived in Oregon about 40 years. And thank you for the opportunity to speak today. Mine's real short. I have supported Chairman Jim Bernard for years and still do, although he used very inappropriate, I'm gonna cut right to the chase, although he used very inappropriate language concerning Measure 101 vote and its most vocal supporter, I understand his frustration. Our elected officials passed and our governor signed legislation to shore up Medicaid in our state. For a legislator who lost the vote in Salem to force the state to spend money on a special election is frustrating. After the voters passed Measure 101, it was obvious our representatives had done what the voters wanted. It was a complete waste of time, energy, and taxpayers' money. Human beings make mistakes. They let their frustrations show in inappropriate ways sometimes, but that is no reason to demand a resignation. I know in my heart that Chairman Bernard has learned an important lesson. I really doubt if he will ever let his frustrations out the same way in the future. What amazes me is that our president uses inappropriate language constantly. He's created demeaning nicknames for his perceived opponents, alters facts to fit his narrative, insults entire races of people, almost on a daily basis. I am sure Chairman Bernard has learned his lesson. Unfortunately, I feel, I fear that the man in the White House is incapable of doing so. Thank you.
Thank you. Tim Lusher and Diane Gruber.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Tim.
I'll wait, I'll wait for her to sit down.
Okay.
Thank you.
My name's Tim Lucie. I'm a native Oregonian, lifelong resident of Clackamas County, except for a part when I lived in Hawaii where I went to college, before I went to Clackamas Community College here where I was a student body president. Native Oregonian, the Lucie ancestry is French-Canadian. Etienne actually was the first Western farmer here in Oregon. He built three houses for John McLaughlin and voted in the shampoo compromise to make Oregon Territory a U.S. colony rather than a French or British. So, I'm very proud of my heritage here in Oregon. Unfortunately, today, Jim Bernard, you did attack a woman named Julie Parrish for no absolute reason, and you can have women up here to come defend you because they're proud that you used taxpayer money or your taxpayer salary to support worthy causes. We're not here to say what worthy causes you supported. You wrote from a Facebook fan page called "Clackamas County Chair Jim Bernard, screw you, Julie Parrish." No man should say "screw you" to anybody, Jim Bernard. No man should say that. And so, you've apologized because you got caught. You've apologized again because you got caught. You apologize again because you got caught. But what you did was inappropriate, and it was wrong. And like the women just talked about in the Me Too movement, us men have to call out animal behavior like that. You should never say "screw you" to a woman, Jim Bernard. "Screw you" is actually a metaphor for another word, another language that is worse than that, that a man should never say to a woman. Julie Parrish is an immigrant, immigrant family from the Middle East. She's a hardworking mother. She's a wife of a soldier.
Wow.
And if you attacked any other person, if you're a Republican that did that to a Democrat, everybody on this council would have already called for you to resign. But you're not, because you're a proud Democrat, you're a proud partisan, and you have violated 2017-93, which you signed this fall. I've asked multiple times for you to reaffirm that pledge, to re-sign it, and it hasn't happened. The minutes that I read that you approved didn't even have that, that I asked for you to re-sign that. And you won't. You won't again.
I absolutely will.
You haven't done it. It's been a month. It's been five meetings since you attacked Julie Parrish. You concluded with saying "cut you from the legislature." It's inappropriate, Jim Bernard, for you to attack people, to be partisan, to commit harassment, which is exactly what you did by definition. The women on this board, Sonia and Martha, both told me that they consider themselves employees. You don't consider yourself an employee. Technically, by HR, I met with the HR office, I was trying to understand, you don't consider yourself an employee, and yet you take a paycheck. You get purse, 25 billion in debt, purse is, because of the Democratic Party that you're so proud to be a member of. We're tired of it, Jim. You attacked a woman, you can't get away with it, you embarrassed Clackamas County, you're an embarrassment. You need to resign. Are you gonna resign today?
You there, Jim?
At the end of your diatribe, you said, "Collect coupons to pay for your health care." Collect coupons? Collect coupons? How dare you?
She calls herself coupon mama.
You need to resign. Don't smile. Yeah, boo your behavior.
Thank you.
Are you gonna resign?
Go ahead.
Thank you.
Ready for me?
Yes.
Okay. I'm Diane L. Gruber, a 30-year resident of Wes Lynn and a semi-retired attorney, as well as a writer for two blogs. This is my fourth time ever attending hearings here. I have come today not to criticize Clackamas County Commissioners, but to invite each Commissioner and to invite all Clackamas County residents to join me on the Capitol steps in Salem this Sunday at 2:00 p.m. You will hear four uplifting speakers talking about important national issues of the day and what everyday Americans can do to make a difference. I know that many Clackamas County residents watch the videos from this board meeting each week. This came as a bit of a surprise to me, because I'd never seen them before. I also know that over 79,000 Clackamas County residents voted for President Trump in 2016. The Salem-based Northwest Trump Alliance for Change has organized this year's local March for Trump rally. The speakers include Joey Bishop, founder of Patriot Prayer and candidate for the U.S. Senate. Joey has been all over the West Coast since the summer of 2016, organizing rallies that call for unity, nonviolence, respecting, and respecting our freedom of speech. I have given each one of you a packet that has our Constitution, all our amendments, including our Bill of Rights and the Declaration of Independence. I have carried around such pamphlets in my briefcase for probably 30 years. These that I handed you came from Hillsdale College. They sent them free to me when they found out that I would be passing them out at the Freedom Rally in Salem. They sent me 400. Okay. Back to Joey. He's announced his candidacy for the U.S. Senate. Like yours truly, Joey is a newly-minted political activist who wants to bring common sense into our national discussions. Brittany Hall and Frank George, founders of the Northwest Trump Alliance for Change, have made, have held numerous rallies in Oregon over the last year or so. They will be speaking as well. I am honored to be a speaker at the Sunday's rally. Mine will be a 10-minute speech about the value of our precious Bill of Rights, about the latest trend in public education designed to damage the next generation, and about how each of us can do our part to restore America's former glory and pride. If you are one of the 90,000 Clackamas County residents who voted for Hillary Clinton but are benefiting from the Trump economy, come and celebrate with us. If you are one of the 12,000 Clackamas County residents who voted for a third party, please come and celebrate the extraordinary improvements under the Trump administration. If you did not vote in 2016, but appreciate the federal government's newfound rule of law, come celebrate with us in Salem. Join us in the uplifting fellowship of Americans who are passionate about our Bill of Rights, who are excited about the developing American Renaissance, that's my word for it, and who are hopeful about America's future, and to celebrate President Trump's, President Trump's recent announcement that he is running for reelection. Thank you.
Thank you. Jose Hernandez and Les Poole. Jose, you're up first.
Thank you, and I'm glad to be here. I'm a board member of the Vietnam Veterans of America, Chapter 392, and I have just been assigned the responsibility of continuing what Mac Woods was pursuing regarding the disabled veterans tax exemption.
My Mac, excuse me, I wrote that.
So, that my purpose for being here primarily is to see we can get every county commission in Oregon to support a measure to grant higher property tax exemptions to disabled veterans as the Senate Bill 694 that was sponsored by Senator Olson. So, I'm here to ask that you find ways of using your organization through media, through whatever, to start getting people to become active on this issue so that we can get the state legislature to act on it, because it's been there more than once, and it has not yet been addressed properly. For your information, I also have my desires to help veterans throughout in a large number of areas, from creating a minority organization of Latino veterans, continue to seek honors for the USS McGinty, that was a ship that trained reserves here in Swan Island. That's what brought me here in '59, and we were the first ships to arrive in Vietnam with 39 active-duty members, Navy, and the remainder of the crew was all reserviced from Oregon, Washington, and Idaho. But since it was occurred in '61, '62, we were never considered active in Vietnam until about seven, eight years ago. And I have tried to get the ship to be recognized when Governor Brown was a state...
Secretary of State.
Secretary of State. She referred me to a member of this area that's in the Senate that deals with veterans, and I have been totally ignored. So, I'm pursuing that, and perhaps this is something that you folk might be able to say, yes, we should recognize the McGinty. I also want to find ways of getting veterans involved in dealing with issues that benefit veterans, and see if there's a way to establish a statewide listing of veterans organizations that all veterans organizations can communicate with one another to pursue issues such as those that I have mentioned here. And that's what I'm here for today.
As you know, our lobbyist in Salem did support that bill, and we went down to Salem and testified in support of that bill to reduce the property taxes, and we'll continue to do that till it happens.
I appreciate it, and for your information, I'm gonna provide you a listing of what I want to stand for, but it's not to brag about anything, it's just so that you all know who I am and what I've done, and I'm experiencing, as an old age, I'm gonna be 80 this year, I'm experiencing memory loss, and it's costing me a lot of problems. I can't hear well for what is being discussed here. I can't hear 100%, and as a result, that keeps me guessing, so everything that I do has to be in writing so that I can understand it. But I'm gonna provide this for your service, and that's it.
All right, thank you. Les.
Thank you, Jose. I was involved in that legislative effort heavily, and we have a long session, a full session, in 2019, and I'll recommit to helping our vets. And if you've seen that gentleman come in before, it's amazing he's here, it's amazing he survived his injuries. Obviously, I'm here for a very simple reason. Last week, there was an exchange between myself and Mr. Bernard, and in that exchange, I mentioned that we haven't heard a public apology. And, and we actually have heard a public apology. We've heard a public apology to Julie weeks later. In his closing comments, Chair Bernard apologized to the Commissioners and staff. Let me be perfectly clear. I asked, others have asked, and in the past, there've been numerous requests for you to publicly apologize, not to the staff, not to one of your victims, but to all of the citizens. Now, an attack by the county's legal definition, and by the legal definition that is very clear in a multitude of court cases, a personal attack is defined as some of the conduct we have seen from you through the years. Last week, Chair Bernard asked me to provide video evidence of him attacking someone. Now, interestingly, a few weeks earlier, when this all started, he mentioned that he had apologized to me. Interesting. So, a few weeks ago, we apologized to Les, and last week, we've, there's no proof whatsoever. I've delivered to the county recorder and to our two newest Commissioners copies of video from 2016, and it's a mere sample of his conduct. And I want you to put yourself in my place and others. You'll notice in the video, he gets caustic with Paul. He's unreasonable, in my opinion, with Martha. And in that little video on that same day, he attacked me, and, and in the attack, it was done after I left. So, I invite you to watch that 44 minutes of video, certainly comment on it next week for us, and realize that it's a mere sample, a mere sample of what has occurred. At some point, the board can take action. I don't think you, you need to have a vote of no confidence yet, but you can certainly censure his conduct, and we can all understand that I'm not here, I'll say it again, because of one Facebook post. It's been nice to package it that way, because it sounds like it was just one little outburst over Measure 101. Please go back and watch the videos of the last month, those of you at home, those of you here that are defending his conduct, praising him. Please go back and watch that. Watch what he has done. I'll close with one last thought. I believe the word of the week this week should be enabler. I really do. How many times do we enable people? How many times do we make excuses for repeated conduct? And then suddenly find out, oh, that person isn't who we thought they were? So, I appreciate being here. I look forward to response, and you can certainly bet that there's much more evidence of his conduct to come. We can move on when Jim Bernard moves on, and I look forward to your resigning. When will you be resigning, Chair Bernard?
Thank you for coming today.
I appreciate that answer. That's a no. Thank you.
All right, we'll be moving on to a public hearing. First, and turn it over to Mr. Gruber.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, this public hearing is to consider the first reading of an ordinance that would amend Chapter 8.04, Public Health Certificates of Sanitation, Licenses, and Contested Cases Procedures of the Clackamas County Code. We have Kathleen Rastetter here to present this item to you.
Good morning. Good morning, Chair Bernard, Commissioners. I'm Kathleen Rastetter, Assistant County Counsel, and I have with me Julie Hamilton, who is with Public Health and responsible for enforcing these ordinances. As you may know, the state of Oregon, through the Oregon Health Authority, gives us as a local public health authority the ability and the authorization to enforce public health laws, so sanitation and restaurant laws, that kind of thing. Those, our ability or our regulations are set out in Chapter 8.04. And as I said in my staff report, these particular law, code amendments have not been amended or updated since 2003, so 15 years, we haven't taken a look at this. So, Julie and I worked this summer and into the fall on updating these regulations in our code so that they are consistent with state law, and there are things that were added, and there are a couple duties we no longer were performing, so they had to come out of the code. I won't get into the specifics unless you have any questions, but this is, we're asking that these amendments be passed by the board so that we can, you know, ensure that our citizens are having safe and healthy meals and recreation opportunities. So, with that, I would ask that this first reading of this ordinance be done by title only.
Okay. Any Commissioners have any questions on this issue?
No, Mr. Chairman.
So, I will open the public hearing and ask if anyone would like to testify on this matter. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion to read title, ordinance by title only.
Mr. Chairman, I move we read the ordinance by title only.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we read the ordinance by title only. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. Next is the county administrator update.
Thank you. I've got several items to share with you this morning. One, I wanted to let you know that our own Assistant County Administrator Emmett Wheatfall, he's been invited by officials from the city of Lake Oswego to meet with them, to talk about how the city might best be able to incorporate diversity, equity, and inclusion principles better in their, their community efforts. And specifically, the Assistant City Manager has asked Emmett to discuss our Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion Council, to talk about what's been done there at that level and the commission level, and with the staff and county programs and activities. So, I, just the fact that...
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair. This will be Ordinance 02-2018, an ordinance amending Chapter 8.04, Public Health Certificates of Sanitation, Licenses, and Contested Case Procedures of the Clackamas County Code.
Okay. Any further discussion? Do the Commissioners have any proposed change or amendments to the draft ordinance by, at this time?
I have none.
So, I don't, we don't have to vote on this, so announce that the second reading will be on Thursday, March 15, 2018, regular scheduled meeting at 10:00 a.m. Correct?
Correct. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda.
All right. Thank you again, Mr. Chair. On today's consent agenda, under Health, Housing, and Human Services, we have approval of a Tri-County Metropolitan Transportation District of Oregon, TriMet Subrecipient Agreement Number GO 180815 EV for Mount Hood Express Bus Service and match funding for the Title 19 Medicaid Non-Medical Waiver Transportation under our Department of Transportation and Development, approval of Amendment Number Three to the contract with OBC Consulting Engineering for consulting engineering services for the replacement of the Salmon River Elk Park Road Bridge. Under disaster, under elected officials, approval of previous business meeting minutes, and under our Department of Business and Community Services, approval of a memorandum of understanding between Clackamas County and the Boring Damascus Grange, Number 260, for the construction of a shelter at Boring Station Trailhead Park, and that concludes the consent agenda.
Okay. Do any Commissioners want to remove or pull an item from the consent agenda? One of the shortest consent agendas we've had in a while. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
It was moved in second. That we approve the consent agenda. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. Next is the County Administrator update.
Thank you. I've got several items to share with you this morning. One, I wanted to let you know that our own Assistant County Administrator, Emmett Wheatfall, he's been invited by officials from the city of Lake Oswego to meet with them, to talk about how the city might best be able to incorporate diversity, equity, and inclusion principles better in their, their community efforts. And specifically, the Assistant City Manager has asked Emmett to discuss our Equity Diversity and Inclusion Council, to talk about what's been done there at that level and the commission level, and with the staff and county programs and activities. So, I, just the fact that they've recognized Emmett's leadership in this effort, I mean, really showcases our growing regional reputation in promoting equity, diversity, and inclusion. The meeting takes place in the coming week, and I just wanted to take a moment to thank Emmett for his hard work, and also to Lake Oswego for the invitation to participate in this. Then I had another item I wanted to share with you about our Clackamas Health Centers. And, you know, about four years or so ago, our health centers were kind of on the financial ropes. They were struggling. We had questions as to whether or not we'd be able to keep them open. And, of course, over the past several years, with a lot of hard work and due diligence, our leadership over in Health, Housing, and Human Services worked hard to put them on what is a very firm, stable, and sound financial footing, which means they're able to provide high-quality primary care services, mental health services, dental services to residents in need and at risk in our community. But apart from that, the financial health of the health centers has enabled our efforts to be able to partner in different and unique ways. We've been able to reach out, for example, to the National Alliance on Mental Illness by providing them some additional funding, some $60,000, to help them with their local community-based efforts. So, for example, they work in collaboration with De Familia, A Familia, this is family-to-family with their classes, helping Compartiendo Esperanza, that's Sharing Hope, with their presentations, assisting NAMI with recruiting and training and bringing onboard volunteers, and then helping to support their recovery-oriented support program. So, that's one area of partnership. Another area of partnership that this financial health has helped us achieve is for the Health Centers Division to work with our Social Services Division to augment and enhance our rent well program. This is where we kind of work with low-income households to help, help them be able to meet their needs so they can meet their rent obligations and stay in their homes. And so, this has helped us expand the capacity of the program. And, of course, this, what this program does is it provides supportive services to families by enabling them to buy bus tickets, gas cards, childcare reimbursement, food, classroom supplies, and, and other things. And so, this was able to be achieved with a $74,000 commitment from the Health Centers Fund to be able to make this happen. And again, it's a sign of what we're able to do when there's good financial management that comes together and enables us to reach out and expand and enhance the way we can help benefit citizens of Clackamas County. So, I just wanted to thank Deborah Cockrell, who manages our health centers, and Jill Smith, who is our deputy, our returning deputy director with Health, Housing, and Human Services, and Richard Swift, for his leadership as well for doing that. So, thank you.
Great. Thank you. Commissioner Fisher.
Yeah. Thank you, Administrator Krep. I want to just piggyback on what you said as I am our liaison for the Health Council, and I have been ever so impressed with the personal stories of what can happen when people have access to health care and how that supports our economy. When people have their health needs met, then they're able to take that next step, become employable, become self-sustaining, and so to be able to provide those extra services is very, very important. And we do really great work in Clackamas County, and I think it's because, as a county, as a government, with our constituents, there's a heart, and there's a heart for caring for those that are most in need, and that helps us continue moving forward in a healthy way. Since I have the soapbox, I want to, I've been thinking a lot about transparency, about citizen involvement and input. We have some serious issues ahead of us when it comes to protecting and promoting our quality of life as we continue to grow, as we look at what's important with congestion and housing affordability in our workforce. And there is a issue that we are looking at as a region, and it is the pedestrian bridge over, from Lake Oswego over to Oak Grove. And I put an article up on my Commissioner Fisher Facebook page. It's been getting quite a bit of response. I want to encourage people to, to follow that and to provide more input because it is a very interesting dialogue, and from all perspectives, and we need to hear all perspectives as county commissioners. So, Commissioner Fisher can be found on Facebook, and any additional comments, I really, really appreciate those. And just with that, we do so much of our work in policy sessions. And last Tuesday, as we were talking about our work plans and how we're going to be dedicating our resources when it comes to planning and transportation and all of that important work the county does in setting those priorities, I just really appreciate my fellow Commissioners and their commitment to seeking. I know all of us are out there. We're connected. We are listening, and we come together and share that, and that's a real gift that we have that structure. I didn't create that structure. That was here. County Administrator Krep, I thank you for facilitating it, and I am very impressed with our process of being able to bring issues, things that are a concern, in a nice, easy flow, and that we are all able to share what we are hearing out there. So, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Schrader.
Yeah. Well, it's been a really busy week this week. Monday, I met, I think, Commissioner Stavas, you were with me there. We met with some of the small providers of telecommunications here in Clackamas County. I know that Commissioner Humbirdston initiated a conversation with them about how we can help get less costly, efficient broadband to the rest, to the rest of the county. So, it was interesting to hear their perspective and conversations about a public-private partnership. I met with the folks from Kaiser, Amy Falver and Ruth Atkins. They are very interested in participating in our housing initiative and the group that we are pulling together to talk about what that will mean as a task force and give us some recommendations. Then, actually, Tuesday afternoon, after executive session and work sessions together, I headed down to, down to Salem, where I basically met with Jeff Riordan and Senator Johnson, talking about shelter funding, because there is a bill that is available, actually, it's appropriation from Ways and Means, that would actually give us an additional $800,000 for shelter funding. And essentially, the talks we've been having with folks is that we would use that for a rapid rehousing program. So, that was a really good thing. Oh, I also met Representative Mark Meek as well. Okay, so I don't want to forget him. And then afterwards, I went to the Association of Oregon Counties, second vice president, and we talked about our finances for next year. We are working on really making sure the organization moves forward on sound financial footing. And I was briefed on a number of things, including information that we are working on about the opportunity networks that the federal government is providing. And those are, those are dollars that will flow through, and what they're trying to target is areas of poverty. The good news is that when you look at the federal map, it actually matches the work that we've already done to identify those areas of poverty in the county. So, that was, that's very good. In other words, our match, our, our matching up with our, what we've already identified is clearly, is clearly making a huge difference, and it gives me, it gives all of us, I think, a sense that we are on the right track with this. So, that's been a really good thing. Was briefed on the Legacy Project with Mr. Krep Wednesday morning, and then, actually, after that, I actually dropped my taxes off, but anyway, okay. Not that anybody cares, but I did. Get them in early, get them in often.
Sounds like Chicago voting.
Oh, yeah. Okay, absolutely. And then this morning, oh, MPAC is canceled on Wednesday, so more to say about that when they, when they meet again. And this morning, I went to the Clackamas Workforce Partnership Executive Committee meeting, and I am the liaison to our Workforce Board. We reviewed the 2016 through 2020 strategic plan, talked about a lot of the work that they're, they've been doing in terms of getting young people connected to jobs, and they're starting a new internet portal to help do just that, very similar to what Work Systems Inc. has done. And also, I'm taking letters with me. I'm heading off to DC tomorrow. My son will be home at my house, watching my dog, and making sure everything's safe, so just to let people know. I'll be heading out to Washington, DC, meeting with our delegation, and not only will I be carrying some of our, our county's messages to it, I'm also going to be carrying the message from the Clackamas Workforce Partnership that we want to keep the funding available for the Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act. And Title One is the Department of Labor, Title Two is Department of Education, Title Three, Department of Labor and Department of Education. These, these dollars help support business partnerships, which is very vital to our country's economic prosperity. And the training and the support is essential to make sure our businesses have the workforce they need and that people who are seeking jobs and are training for jobs get the, get the information they need to really participate in the local economy. Okay, so Kevin picked out a really interesting word this week. I don't know if I can pronounce it, but I'm going to try. Okay. Waiting for the screen, buddy. Is it coming? Ah, there we go. So, let me give it a shot. Absquat.
Absquatulate.
Absquat, how do you say it?
Absquatulate.
Upsquash, like Sasquatch.
Absquatulate.
Absquatulate. Okay. I should hand this to you, Ken. It's a verb, and it means leaving abruptly. It's a Latin form. It was from the mid-19th century, and the children, I don't know if I can pronounce this either, had upsquatulated from the yard before their parents found the mess they created. Okay, there we go. Thank you for that word, Ken.
That's a great word.
That's great. It's actually, it's totally new to me. This is one I really, yeah, so good vocabulary, guys, just saying. Okay, arts and culture activities in the county. And I'll start reading, then it'll come up on the screen. Spiral Gallery, Friday, First Friday Light in and around nature with Boyd Holloway. That's going to be at the Spiral Gallery in Estacada, Friday, March 2nd, 2:00 to 6:00 to 8:00 a.m., and he's going to be sharing, you know, photographs and prints of his work. He'll have antique cameras, glass plates, and light, light refreshments will be served. And Lake Oswego, the Millennium Concert Band Performance, the Lake Oswego Millennium Concert Band will present their winter concert, concert with a great variety of outstanding band music. There will be something for the most musical tastes that all will enjoy. That's Sunday, March 4th, 7:30 to 9:15 p.m., Lakridge High School Auditorium. And for more information about any arts events in the county, go to clackamasartsalliance.org. Okay, I'm done. Took a while. Sorry.
Commissioner Stavas.
Thank you, Chair. Normally, I come up here usually at this part of the meeting and talk about some of the things that are going on, and usually they've been wide-ranging because we work on a wide-ranging amount of topics. So, I want to just let my constituents out there know that housing and the veteran shelter and economic development, that enables more private sector job development and job growth is, is things that we're working on, and things, actually, this week, I had my hands directly on all of those. But this transportation issue, which I keep on, at least in the last few meetings, keep on bringing up, is at a heightened state, and I'm, so I'm educating or informing my colleagues as well as our people that are watching this today. Last afternoon, up between 2:00 and 5:00 o'clock in downtown Portland, we had a pretty substantial, important tolling meeting with, convened by ODOT, and it was a very interesting meeting. I was actually a little bit encouraged in that the work that was done and our comments and concerns regarding more analytics needed and more concerns about diversion and safety and, and equity, and actually, the future vision for actually trying to get our transportation system sized adequately to meet future needs was actually resonating towards the end of the meeting. So, they had really narrowed, the staff had narrowed the proposal down to five particular options, of which we did not really endorse yesterday, and we'll actually get to the next meeting, perhaps in April, I believe, early April is the next meeting. So, and also encouragement that, at least from one of the, one of the elected members in the room, that they would perhaps consider not de-escalating, if you will, or, or bringing down the tier priority level of I-205 and actually keeping that at the top. I heard that from Metro Councilor Dirkson yesterday, that he's interested, at least himself, in trying to keep that at an elevated level. And I say that because tomorrow morning, Commissioner Bernard and myself will be at the Regional Transportation Forum. We'll spend another four or five hours discussing our priorities in the region and how we come together on that. There is a lot of movement right now in a lot of different areas. Transit is a very hot one. A week ago on Friday, spent several hours advocating for more bus transit, just to be specific, so people know, bus transit for the underserved areas in Clackamas County. We don't, we're not getting as much coverage as the rest of the area, and so we're looking at means of advocating for that, and that's part of House Bill 2017, which was passed by the legislature last year. So, a lot, a lot of moving stuff. I appreciate Commissioner Fisher bringing up the, the Lake Oswego to Oak Grove Trolley Bridge. Indeed, that's generated a lot of discussion, and out of that discussion has been, well, what else is, is county doing? And so, I want to, because I see two members here that have, two people in the audience have advocated for, a couple, three years ago, for the trolley bridge crossing from Portland Avenue over to Oregon City. And we actually were awarded some money several years back to be spent to study that bridge, to actually convert it for a pedestrian bridge, and the storm came along here a couple of years ago and undermined the abutments for that, and that bridge was torn down. The good news and the update on that, out of all this comment, was I want people to actually, actually know that, that we are able to secure that funding, and I believe a little bit more, to, to pursue the effort to look at replacing that bridge entirely. So, that's in the works. So, that's one update on one other pedestrian bridge in the area. The second one, the most important bridge, going back, digressing a bit to the I-205, is the Abernathy Bridge. So, the legislature gave us about $15 million to study, to further study and evaluate that and render a cost of completion by February, which I think I spoke to that last, last Thursday. That happened. We're waiting to see what the legislature does, but we have a $34 million gap to keep that going. So, that's another very important bridge. So, getting back to the study, I think the significance of this dialogue has been, oh, geez, you're, you're wasting $306,000, and you should be putting that towards the bridge. It's $306,000 for a feasibility study, and we are required to have multimodal, in our transportation plan, multimodal projects and plans to meet the needs. And so, in scale, this $306,000 feasibility study is, in comparison to our efforts in the Abernathy Bridge, is minuscule in, in essence. And even if, even project completion would be minuscule in comparison, but I just wanted everyone to know that, yes, we are moving forward on these, and yes, we think there's value in doing the feasibility study on all, both these other pedestrian bridges, but our number one priority, our number, our top priorities are the Abernathy Bridge, I-205 bottleneck between Stafford Road and Exit 10. So, that's being pursued as best we can, and we got some good news yesterday, as I mentioned yesterday, at the, at that meeting, and we'll try to advocate for that tomorrow morning. And so, I just wanted to close, let people know we are pursuing those. And the other high priority project for the county is the Sunrise Corridor Phase Two. Phase One was highly successful, reduced congestion, and, and was successful, and we're moving on. So, that's my update for today.
I have a couple of questions, though.
Sure, absolutely.
When you talked about a high priority, the Abernathy Bridge, you're talking more of a regional priority, metro regional priority, state priority.
Yeah, specifically 205. So, there was, been some talk and suggestion among the staff that are working on the regional, the regional staff that are working on the regional transportation plan, that we were getting the signal that that would be dropped in priority from a top priority to a level-two priority. And I, again, I, what I heard Councilor Dirkson say, which is a positive, was that he was interested in, in keeping that a top priority, so he meaning to be in the top tier.
So, the other question is, when you talked about, could the Abernathy Bridge, are they talking bike and pet access, too?
Not, I don't know, and that's not necessarily, I, I, that's a good point, and it's typically on interstate. You don't have any bike, pet access, so it would have to be at least some kind of, at least not physically separated, but there had to be some kind of a safety wall between there. between there. But no, that's not in the dialogue, and I will actually ask that question next Monday, this coming Monday, because the Regional One Act will be, our meeting Monday night, so I'll ask that very question.
Because there's quite a distance between the bridges.
Yeah, and I had someone email me, say, Commissioner, I don't understand, this doesn't make any sense, but big deal if it takes 10 minutes off a trip. My quote in the paper, actually, they quoted me and say it was 10 miles off the trip, not 10 minutes. But, so from the point of, the point of where you would, perhaps the concept of where the bridge is and where it would meet on both sides, if you were to, today, if you were at both those points, in order to get there, you need to make a 10-mile round trip to get to those points, either way, almost either way you took it. And there's 10 miles also between the Sellwood Bridge and the Abernathy Bridge and no other any kind of crossing, whether it's bike, pet, or car.
You had a question, Paul?
No, you, I wanted to just clarify the, you asked it.
Okay.
Thank you, Chair Bernard.
Yeah, but it's actually kind of, it's a very busy time, which I want people to know, it is a very busy time. And this weekend, I'll be working on, working with volunteers on a number, frankly, of a number of housing and other important issues, so that are not transportation-related. So, it's been very busy times, and I'm just honored to have the opportunity to serve our county.
Commissioner Humbertson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. To an issue raised by Jose earlier, I want to speak to that. Last year, when Senator Olson presented his bill for property tax reduction for disabled veterans, it had no cosponsor. And generally speaking, the practice in the legislature is that if a member of the minority party puts forth a piece of legislation and doesn't have a cosigner from the majority party, it generally won't go forward at all. It doesn't even get a hearing in committee. So, when I spoke to Senator Olson, and he told me he had no cosponsor, I asked Senator Kathleen Taylor to cosponsor it last year, which she graciously did. Unfortunately, it never got to the floor for a vote. I have spoken to Senator Olson this year, as well as his current competition in the election. Both have committed to reintroducing the legislation, and if we need cosponsor, I will do everything I can to get one of our contingent down there to cosponsor the bill, and you can be assured I'll be down there testifying. As a veteran, even though I don't personally benefit from that, because I am not a disabled veteran, I want to make sure that the people who paid the price get the help. So, I will do everything I can. Still on Salem, I testified on a land use issue. I had made a commitment during the course of my campaign to protect EFU farmland. We had an issue come up where there was an attempt by a single individual to get special treatment in the legislature regarding a farm stand piece of land that they wanted to convert to industrial. We testified on that, as did many other people, and that bill was killed, so the land remains EFU farmland. At AOC, we had two issues of particular import to women at the Public Safety Meeting. One was a strangulation bill, which I believe has passed and will be, either will be or has been, signed by the governor, and the other was a rape kit processing bill. If you've been following that at all in the news, both nationally and locally, the processing for the rape kits have been underfunded. So, what has happened is that women who have experienced this trauma have been unable to get justice for what occurred to them. Neither one of those bills was going to be supported by AOC. They were going to take a neutral position. I raised the issue at the committee hearing and made the point that both of those bills, which deal with people hurting other people, are bills that we should always take a position on and do something about. To their credit, they all voted to do so and sent a letter to the state legislature in support of the strangulation bill, which did pass. So, that is now a felony. So, I hope it reminds people that your spouse is not your punching bag, your spouse is your partner, and you need to treat them with dignity and respect. Otherwise, there will be consequences. I attended the Elected Officials Forum for the Water Environmental Services, which is an interesting discussion with our cities, the Canby Chamber of Commerce event in support of the business community down in Canby. Attended the West Lynn State of the City, as did many of my colleagues. I commend you to the West Lynn website, where you can see Mayor Axelrod's speech about all of the accomplishments in West Lynn, and they have had quite a successful year and should be commended for that. We also, just, I'm sure everybody knows this, but for the public to know, on the Bike-Ped Bridge issue between Oak Grove Jennings Lodge and Lake Oswego, we already have a citizen who has volunteered to serve as an advisor on that committee, who's very interested in it, so there's a lot of interest from the community on that. And then the final was, we had a second follow-up meeting on the ISP, Internet Service Provision issue that we are working on with the large providers this morning, and invited them to participate with us in a public-private partnership to make sure that we can get high-speed, low-cost internet to every home and business in Clackamas County. And seemed to be a reasonably well-received discussion. We will see where it goes, but that is a long-term goal that we have for our county, and I will close with the dog. So, if you bring that up, thank you. And this is Churchill. He is hoping to find my forever home. He's an active eight-year-old long-haired Chihuahua mix who is looking for someone to take him for walks, but who also appreciates cuddling. He has a silky longer coat that will need some grooming to keep him tangle-free and comfortable. He would do best with children 13 years old or older, and if he has to live with another dog, he would prefer them to be his size, and they would need to meet, to make sure that they like each other. So, if you're looking for a quiet fella, he may just be your man. For more information about Churchill and other adoptable dogs, please contact Clackamas County Dog Services at (503) 655-8628, or www.clackamas.us/dogs. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Great. And I also attended the Lake Oswego State of the City with Mayor, excuse me, West Lynn, Mayor Axelrod, they are doing a lot. Look forward to the Regional Leadership Forum and to support Paul and all he's been doing down there, very knowledgeable, somebody we could not easily replace with all these years of knowledge. Also, we had our Audit Committee meeting, which, proud to say, after nine years, I started the Audit Committee, there were no findings. Everything was great, response from all the various departments were outstanding, and proud to say that it was on time, and no findings, so that was very, very exciting. Also, Emmett Wheatfield, sharing that resource, him as a resource to other communities, is very important. I know he's been working hard on addressing our issues and requesting information from some of our folks that, so we can complete our process. And with that, I mean, one of the reasons that things are so busy down in Metro is the legislature passed some funding last year, and it's the first time there might be something worth fighting for, so appreciate your hard work. With that, we're adjourned. Thank you.